Welcome to the June 14, 2012 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by L. James Williams III, the Minister of the East Cotton Street Church of Christ. Would you all please stand?
Almighty God, we thank you for this gathering today. We thank you for the blessings of our country, our nation, and our city. We thank you, dear Father, for these individuals who serve at the behalf of the community. We pray, dear Father, your wisdom and your guidance. We pray that the things that are done here might be to the benefit of all. And we pray, dear Father, for continued prosperity. We pray, dear Father, for continued blessings, and we pray that we'll always be thankful. In Christ Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Pastor, thank you very much. Okay. Let's see what we've got first today. Citizen comment items. And I've got, oh, Mr. Vic Burma's here tonight. Where you at, Vic? Come on up here. How you doing?
Pretty good. How are you doing, Mayor Dean?
All right. Got some more rain. That's good.
Yeah. Mayor Dean, members of council, thank you for letting me speak. One of the things that's happened recently, and we had approved it at our last meeting, was that the Longview Race Relations Committee is now the, I believe, the Longview Unity and Diversity Committee. And what that allows us, and it allows us to look at unity and diversity in our community as a whole. And that takes many forms. And right after that announcement, I was, when we have speaker cards at our meeting, and I wanted to share what I, briefly what I spoke about there was, I was, actually, the first thing after the name change was that I announced that June is LGBT Pride Month, and LGBT being lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender. It's been celebrated since the 1960s. It is a celebration of gay, the gay rights movement, which is a civil rights movement. And it is, does, it is something that has grown in stature over the years. This is the fourth year in a row and the fifth time overall that it's had a presidential proclamation as an official month. I just wanted to make sure that council and you, Mayor Dean, are aware that there is a gay community here in Longview that is an integral part of our community. And I think LGBT Pride Month is a great celebration of that. I myself am a straight ally of the community, so I just wanted to make sure that I shared that this month is LGBT Pride Month. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Vic. Appreciate it. All righty. Okay. How about Sonya Carroll?
Hello. I'm Sonya Carroll, and I just wanted to tell you all that we appreciate everything you all do. And I came to speak tonight. I'm in a government class, and our teacher asked us to speak if we could, so I was just coming up here to tell you all thank you.
Oh, thank you for coming. Do we get to ask you some questions? Okay. Somebody has to sign that paper that you spoke on. Well, it's actually gonna be on TV, so that's good. Oh. Okay. Brandon Johnson.
How are you all doing?
All right.
Hello, TV world. I like to say hello. We often forget them. Attorney, secretary, council people, city manager, mayor. I come before you because I had discussions with a few people here lately. Usually, I don't stand before you usually for anything, and particularly pertaining to me personally. However, this issue with the discussion item today that I think you're discussing, Mayor, about potentially having filing fees as well as residency requirements for anyone that wants to be on the city council, I think it's an amendable thing to do. With the filing fees, I hope that when you guys are discussing that, you make it a reasonable amount if you do so. The way the climate is now in the United States, I don't know if you've been watching national news, there are a lot of things going on where it's limiting people from accessing the government process. We do live in a democracy, so things should be open for everyone. And I do believe that there is a requirement in the state code, I think I found on the Secretary of State's website, where if you do have a filing fee, as you may know, there must be a petition. The thing with the petition is, is that in one of our recent elections, someone only had 45 votes. So when you have a petition and you require people to have 200, or 100, or 500 signatures, when some of the people that are running only get 45 votes, it kinda doesn't balance out. The numbers don't fit.
You gotta make that 100 go vote if they sign that paper.
Quite, potentially, but then you have to look at it. If they don't get 100, then they can't even be a part of the city council. And we look at you and we respect you. Although we elect you and you work for us, we want to make sure that everyone has access to city council and the mayor's position. So having said that, I want to let you know that the NAACP is opposed to the filing fee, unless there is a reasonable number of people required for the petition.
Right.
It is reasonable, according to information we have.
Yeah.
What is the number?
But we can't tell you that just yet.
Oh, you can't tell me. Well, you know.
No, we got.
Twenty-five or half a percent in the last major, last mayor's election.
Yeah, there's, there's, we're gonna, when we discuss it, so in other words, if we have 40,000 registered voters here, then half of 1% is 200 signatures.
Right back to that 100 or 200.
It's 25. It's the largest of 25 of all that number.
Right.
I mean, we, obviously, Brandon, if we did anything, you know, it's gotta go to the Justice Department first.
Well, of course.
So we tried to make up something that was totally unreasonable, unrealistic. It never, it never passed the mustard. So we're just gonna talk and, but we appreciate.
Right, right. Good to have it on the table, but I want you to be mindful of the climate in the United States.
Got you.
All right? Thank you.
Got it. Thank you, buddy. Okay. Let's see. Presentation items. Okay.
Mr. Willard. He's coming up to the dials.
You're going around. Good luck in your next job.
Well, we just said you were in public, right?
Okay. This is a presentation of a service pin for five years of service. The five-year service pin for David Willard, who joined our city as a city manager on June 25, 2007. Assistant city manager in Odessa for five years. God bless you. City manager in Borger, Texas for seven years. County judge in Hutchison County, Texas for five years. How long were you on the school board out there?
Six years.
Six years on the school board? Okay. So we want to honor Mr. Willard tonight with his five-year pin.
Mr. Willard, here is your pin, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. And we appreciate your service. Thank you. Okay. Chuck Ewing's. Yes, sir. Chuck Ewing's. Chuck, we want to honor you with your 10-year service pin.
Thank you, sir.
All right, hold on. Okay. Chuck joined the city of Longview on June 3, 2002 as the Developmental Services Coordinator. He became Director of Developmental Services in 2004. He stepped in, and did a great job, by the way, as interim city manager during the search to find Mr. David Willard. He was promoted to Assistant City Manager in 2007. Before coming to the city, he worked for Etcoq and Kilgore, the cities of Denton and in Southlake. And Chuck also has served our country in Afghanistan as part of the Air Force Reserves. Is that correct?
Air National Guard.
Air National Guard. But we do appreciate your service. Thank you, Chuck. I was told that y'all were not aware of that, so Mary Ann did, did a good job. Okay. Okay. Now, presentation item of the update regarding implementation of the municipal court software system. Ms. Sally Reese. I want to say hello to Judge tonight. Judge Merriman's here with us tonight. Judge, how you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Mr. Willard. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the implementation of the ENCODE software that we purchased and implemented on October 1 of 2011. It was a little bit bumpy at first. For the first few weeks, we, you know, had to get used to using the new system. But as the employees became more familiar with the software, things started working a lot easier for them. We did have some problems with some conversion of data from the old system. If you remember, we had quite a bit of problems in the old system, and when we converted, we brought some of those forward. And we had to go in and manually fix each of those cases, but we have cleaned that all up now, and things are going a lot better. We find very few conversion issues at this point. We learned in the beginning that we didn't have quite enough training from the company when we first implemented, but we have found through research and networking with some of the other courts, and I also attended a users group meeting, and we now are part of a community where we can share information, and that's helped us tremendously. So much to the point that we are going to host a regional training in August for other courts to, and the Tyler Technology is going to come to Longview for two days and provide training. We'll have people from other cities coming in, and we'll have four of our staff members that are gonna be part of that training. And I thought it was very nice that we're new users, and they're already wanting us to be a host for, for that training function. And they said, we are one of their larger users in our part of the state. Some of the things that we've, are really glad about the software is that the financial reporting is more accurate. I've spoken with Vicky Semetti in finance, and that's one of the praises that she sings about it, is the fact that we transfer a lot of our information electronically now, and it cuts out a lot of that human error. And it's, it's faster and more efficient in that respect. We've also noticed that the financial reporting better meets our needs, and it's more accurate. Refunds, we have less errors because a lot of that is more automated than it was previously. Little things like being able to run a report and work simultaneously. With the old system, if you started a report running, you may have two hours, your computer was tied up, and you couldn't do anything else on your computer. Now, we can actually work in the software at the same time a report's running, and what used to take us two hours may take five minutes. And so that's been a really great improvement for us. The statistical reports that we have to provide to the state of Texas, one of those is to the Office of Court Administration. And the system prepares that report for us, and it's actually accurate. That's one of the biggest things that we're proud of. We had to do a lot of manual correcting in the old system. This one, we have accurate reporting, so we're real happy about that. We also have our conviction reports that are transmitted electronically, and we had to have human intervention before now they can go automatically. We have an interface with the collection agency, and that's different from our old system. We are able to transmit updates to changes in cases that involve the collection agency, and they update their records more efficiently, which saves, you know, the citizen issues with a lag in our records being updated. And it also helps us with the billing process, where we're getting our money turned in from the collection agency faster, and we're more accurate in the reporting with that. We have noticed a 13% increase in people paying the collection agency instead of us, which actually means that we're seeing more results from them than we ever have before. We started out in January with 96.4% of the fines were paid directly to the court instead of to the collection agency on cases that were in collections. Now, we're down to 85.5 are paid to the court, with 14.5 being paid to the collection agency. So we can see that they're actually, you know, working harder for us now, instead of us collecting the money they are. So we're really happy about that. We have done a couple more things to move the software forward, one of which is Insight Online Payments. Right now, we have a third-party vendor that does our telephone credit card payments and our online credit card payments, in addition to the city having a link through the website. In the last month, we've changed that link from going to our third-party vendor to going to our own in-house online payment system. It makes things a lot more efficient for us because it posts automatically to the case. The way that it works with our third-party vendor, they send us an email, then we have to go into the case and post the payment, and then finance has to work with it and reconcile that. With using the Insight, it makes everything work in the background to where the payment automatically gets posted. If there's a warrant, it gets cleared immediately when the person makes the payment online, instead of waiting for us to come in the next morning and clear the warrant. So it's more efficient for us, and it's more efficient for the public as well. We hope to have that fully converted soon to where we can end our contract with that third-party vendor for the online piece. We'll still be using them for the telephone credit card payments, but not for online. We have one more project that we're working on that we'll be implementing next week, and that's the electronic ticket riders. We purchased five electronic ticket riders, four of which will be going to the Police Department Traffic Division, and one that will be coming to the court for our parking enforcement officer. Whenever they begin using these, it will reduce the number of citations that we have to manually data enter every day, and it will increase the accuracy because we won't have the, the human factor of keying in the wrong information. And it will allow our clerks to move on to some other issues that we need them to work on. We are going to be adding two more if it's approved in the next budget, so that we'll have a total of seven electronic ticket riders. And we hope to keep adding to that number because for every one that we add that gets out into the police department, into the field, then it helps free up our clerk's I think that it was a very good move for us to go to this software. We haven't regretted it at all. I hope that you'll be pleased with the results that you will see in financial reports and all as we continue to move forward. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Mr. Allen.
You may, you may have to excuse me a little bit. I just got out of the dentist office at 5:00. When you talked about the collection agency.
Poor dentist.
Collecting more. Would you give us a little better explanation of what you mean there?
Sure. Okay. If I go back to January, the 1st of 2012, we had, of the cases that were in collection for the month of January, the clerks collected at the window $24,310. The collection agency in their office collected $902. Now, we're into, for the end of May, the clerks collected $23,625, and the collection agency collected $4,836.
I just wanted to make sure that the people didn't misunderstand that and think that we're turning more over to the collection agency. What you're saying is the collection agency is doing a better job.
Yes.
But we're still collecting, here at City Hall, the amount that we previously collected.
Right. And what I'm, I'm trying to get across is that it's not that we're sending people before time. Our contract is that once it gets to 90 days after a warrant is issued, that they go. And so we are just more accurately doing that, and the agency is able to.
Yeah.
Work the cases better because our information is more accurate and up to date.
So on the 90-day-old citations, or what the legal name is, the collection rate is going up tremendously on the ones that are over 90 days old.
Right. And the, and the collection agency is showing that they're taking in more of the money. You know, we're still taking in about roughly the same amount, but they're taking in more.
Yes.
Which shows us that they're working harder for us, and it's working better now.
Okay. Mr. Manley.
Ms. Reese, congratulations. It was a pretty substantial expense, and it sounds like it was money well spent. I'm glad to hear that. Certainly sounds like y'all are much more productive and efficient. I can't imagine sitting and waiting for a computer to print something out for two hours. So my question is this. Have you been able to quantify exactly what the financial impact is to the court based upon this new system? I certainly understand we're collecting faster or being more efficient, and the collection agencies, because they have this information, can collect money maybe before they couldn't. Is there a dollar amount that you could put on this that says, based upon the, wasn't it 60 grand we spent on the software?
More than that. It was 120.
Ooh. Okay. So, but anyway, have you been, been able to quantify any kind of return on that investment?
No, not at this point. I'm hoping that at the end of the fiscal year, that we'll have enough data to compare at that point and be able to, to show, you know, something that's meaningful. Right now, by just looking at what we've been able to do since we've corrected the collection issue, and that's a good indicator that because we've got processes in place and we have accurate information flowing, that we're seeing an improvement there. And I think by the time we get to the end of this year and we're able to look back, that we'll really be able to bring you something that's more meaningful at that time.
Good. Makes sense. I look forward to hearing that then. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Frost.
On the automatic ticket riders, does the, does the policeman take that and do it in the field and automatically send it to y'all? Is that the way that works?
Similar to that. They'll have a handheld unit, and it'll have a, a way that it can read a barcode, so that they'll go up to the car and they'll be able to scan the barcode on the registration certificate, and it'll automatically feed the vehicle information into the unit. They'll take the person's driver's license and run it across a swiper, and it'll read their driver's license and fill in all the information on the ticket from their driver's license. And then they'll have drop-down menus, and they'll be able to, you know, type with fingers or use a stylus and fill out the rest of the information. They'll have a printer, and they'll be able to have the person sign the unit, and then they'll print out their citation. At the end of their shift, they'll come into the department, and they'll dock their unit and download all the tickets for the day, and then we will take that and pull it into the court. And we'll have it on a more timelier basis because sometimes it may take a day or two before a ticket makes it to us, but this way, we'll have them at the end of their shift. We can upload them immediately.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda, council. Any items on the consent agenda you'd like to consider separately? If not, may I have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Oh, excuse me. Let me back up just a second. Well, we'll go ahead and put that one into books. Let's get back to that discussion item. Discuss options regarding residence requirements and filing fees for city council candidates. Sorry, Brandon, we were about to bounce right over it. He liked that. Counsel, let me, let me tell you where this originates from. And I use the term, I wanted to use the term originated, but it actually originates. During my recent campaign reelection, if I was asked once, I was asked 100 times, why does the city not have some form of filing fee so that only candidates that are, that are truly serious about pursuing, you know, a city council seat, the mayor's seat, et cetera, will, will file? And, and this, this has happened a number of times in this community where someone has filed for, for a seat, and, and there's a contested race. They, they were not serious in terms of the things that you ordinarily do to earn, okay, in campaigning for a seat in this council. And, and the problem with that is, is personally, I think a campaign, a serious campaign is good for us. It's good for each one of these members because it, it, it puts us in, in contact, hands-on with the people that were asking to vote for us. So I think a serious campaign for election to not only this body, but to any, to any governmental body is a good thing. I think it makes us better at our job to go through that. But the other side of the coin is, is when you have a situation where there's not a serious candidate, okay, for, for the position, they either don't work at it, they don't, they don't campaign for it, they may have just moved here, got a, got an epiphany that they needed to be on the city council. But, but the citizens of Longview, because of that, end up spending, depending on who you talk to, $20,000 to $40,000 to have a campaign or pay for a campaign in order to have boxes all across the city for, for an election that's not really, where there's an opponent or there's a candidate that's not really serious about even doing this. And, and, and it was made public in the newspaper that it wasn't serious. So, but that's, and, and I'm, I'm like Brandon. I agree with the democratic process. But I also feel that it's important that we don't burden, we don't saddle the taxpayers of Longview, you know, with, with the cost of, of, of a, for instance, in my situation, a citywide campaign when there was not really a serious candidate to, that was actually really even interested in the job. So I was, I was asked numerous times, why don't we, why don't we have some, and it doesn't have to be some, like, again, agreement, Brandon, it doesn't have to be some big, huge, crazy number. But if you're serious enough to, to, to spend money to file, like, and let me point out, this happens in other entities that there is, I mean, there is a mandatory filing fee. Okay? There's a mandatory filing fee. Cities, and we have studies in front of us of, of different cities throughout the state, which we asked for, that do charge a filing fee, or there's a petition, like Brandon said. And, and, and that's, that's, that's what they do. And I, I think personally that we need to put in place something. And let me point this out. If the council were to direct city staff to prepare a, you know, some type of filing fee, petition, et cetera, first thing it has to do, as I understand, it's gotta go to the Department of Justice. And the Department of Justice has to approve that there would be some charter amendment, amendment. And then it would be up to the voters in a referendum to decide to, to put together, I mean, to put in place a filing fee or not to. So, Brandon, the democratic process is in place, okay? The Justice Department, it has to smell, I mean, it has to pass the mustard test. And the citizens of Longview would decide that that's a good idea. It's not a good idea. The point of bringing it forward is, is that many people question why they, that, that, you know, taxpaying citizens have to pay for election when there's not really a serious campaign taking place. Okay? So I will open it up to council for, for, for discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have an exact number, Shelley, an amount, a dollar figure as to how much it would cost, or a roundabout figure anywhere, to have that additional, to, if we have more than one person running in a campaign, kind of similar to what took place during the last election?
How much an election costs?
When you, when you add that addition, because we're talking about financial implications and.
Sure.
And trying to decide if we want to impose some type of fee. So I'm just curious to know how much additionally, out of the ordinary, ordinarily, what it would have cost us? How much did that cost us as a city?
I don't, I don't have the financial information. I don't know if, if we had someone in the.
Well, I, I think Shelley knows about what it costs to run a citywide election. To man, to man the polling place, and Robert's giving this look like maybe she's not supposed to answer this, but it costs to, to, number one, the rent of the boxes, okay, for the polling site, the staffing of the polling site, okay, and whatever else goes, but those two numbers right there, there's numbers. And I, again, I tried to, to say that I've heard different numbers, from 20,000 to 40,000, depending on the different variables, but, but it's in that number. Okay? the different variables, but, but it's in that number, okay? Shelley?
Um, a two, two district election, and I don't have the exact numbers, but a two district election is going to be, um, about half the cost of a full city election. And, and at that time, that's, we would have just had, of course, Mr. Smith, you know, ran and opposed.
Right.
So, he wouldn't have been on the ballot at all.
Right.
And then, uh, if Mayor Dean hadn't have been opposed, then we would not have had a, a six district.
A poll.
We would have just had a one district for Mr. Sims.
And let me be, I'm gonna clarify this again. Mayor Dean is fine with being opposed, okay? And, and, and again, I think it makes us better at our job. You know, I, I, I enjoy being out in the public in, in campaigning, so that's fine. But, but it, it should be such that, you know, serious candidates that really, that really want to be up here, you know, should go through the process, and, and we, we want people to, to, uh, we want people to step up and, and run for the city council and et cetera. So, that's, okay? All right. Mr. Sims?
Oh, Mayor, I'm gonna ask, uh, Shelley to get those figures for us, uh, or get as close as she possibly can and have the, uh, the cost. Uh, what I'm interested in specifically is how much money did it cost the city when, uh, this lady, uh, ran against, uh, the mayor? And, and, uh, how much did we have to spend on that? Because she wasn't apparently a serious candidate. Uh, she left the city from what the newspaper says a day prior to election, and so therefore, we had to have all the polls open, which, like you said a while ago, we wouldn't have to. We'd, we'd probably just have it open in my district only. And this would be a tremendous saving to the city, and that's exactly why the mayor and the council is bringing this forward. We're not trying to keep anyone from running, but we want serious candidates. And, uh, if they're serious, uh, they'll be happy to pay the small fee that we're probably going, going to approve as a council, but then, like the mayor said, uh, it'll have to go forward to the Justice Department. But, uh, no, I think, I, just, just for serious voters, so if you could get us.
That's not a problem.
Okay, good, thank you.
Maybe you could get that out. Yes, sir. Mr. Garrett?
Only difficulty I have, Mayor Dean, with, uh, the filing fee, as I looked through our chart that I provided by City Attorney, the only cities over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people charge the filing fee. And cities outside Tyler, Brownville, Abilene, none of those cities charged a filing fee. But only cities I see that charge the filing fee is Fort Worth, Dallas, Houston. They charge a, a minimum fee for, uh, the basic filing. Uh, I would like to see us have a filing fee, but we also have to be on the same basis as some of the smaller cities outside.
Sure, sure. Well, one, one thing is, is, is I do know that some of the smaller cities ha- have had this issue and, and have talked about this issue. And, and so, um, me personally, I'm, I'm not afraid that because, you know, a city our side hadn't done something, that, that we shouldn't do something. Uh, uh, again, I, I think one of the, the, besides public safety, you have heard me say this before, I think our, the fiduciary responsibility of the taxpayer that we have here is, is, is maybe not our number-one thing because of public safety, but it's right there. And, and again, I have no problem with campaigns and, and having a good opponent, and it's, it's good for you.
Yes.
Okay? But like Mr. Sims pointed out, this person had, had, had already left, moved away from the city, okay? And, and so, you know, had the person been elected, they were already in default. I mean, they, they were already, you know, they, they couldn't have served. And, and, and personally, you know, the, the comments I heard and whatnot, I mean, it, it, I don't wanna use the word embarrassing, but it was, I, I mean, there was a lot of people asking lots of questions, why can this happen? So, anyway, let, let me, let me, let me put something out there and see what council thinks, a- after reviewing this and looking at this, and, and it's, it's a twofold thing. One, you can put up a, a fee to run, or it can be offset by a, um.
Petition.
A petition by a number of people. And, and what I would, I would suggest, just as a, as a point of, of discussion, i- is for the mayor, that, that that number be two hundred dollars, or one-half a percent of the registered voters of the city of Longview. There's forty-two thousand registered voters in the city of Longview, so that person would need to get a little over two hundred signatures on a petition. Again, if you're a serious candidate, you know, for, for this job or any one of these jobs, you know, two hundred signatures on a petition is not a huge number, okay? Then I would suggest, as far as the city council, the filing fee be a hundred dollars, and the number of registered voters, um, if, if there's roughly seven thousand, and Shelley's gotta help me with this, but there's roughly seven thousand citizens per district, or registered voters per, okay, on average, and you use that same number, they gotta get, what, is it thirty-five? Am I math right?
Well, the, the, um, the state law limits us on that, and what it has to be is, is the greater of either twenty-five, so it's gonna be twenty-five signatures at a minimum, or it's one-half of one percent of, of the number of voters who actually voted.
Voted.
In the last election in that, in that district.
Okay, so, so hold on a second. So, we don't get into this bigger, the, the, your first, the, the, it had to be what? Not, forget about the or, which was the last election. What was the first?
Uh, twenty-five, uh, signatures is, is the absolute minimum.
Okay, for city council.
For, for city council or mayor, for any elected city office.
Okay.
Twenty-five would be the minimum. And then, if, or, the or part is, you look at the number of votes that were actually cast for mayor.
In the last.
In the most recent election, either citywide, if we're talking about mayor.
Right.
Or just in that district.
Okay.
If we're talking about a particular district. You look at the number of votes that were cast for mayor, and it's one-half of one percent of those votes that were cast. Whichever of those two numbers is.
So, if it was two, excuse me, but if it was two thousand votes in the last mayor's election, one-half of one percent.
Ten.
Ten people.
Would be ten. So, you'd have to get twenty-five, you'd have to get twenty-five signatures. It's the greater of those two.
Okay.
And state law just, it just expressly states, this is the, the way you must do it.
Okay. Good enough. Okay, who else has anything? Mr. Allen?
Just to make it clear, in other words, uh, the filing fee can be offset by the petition. In other words, you can either pay a filing fee, or you can bring this petition in. Is that, if you don't have the filing fee money, the petition will substitute for the money. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
But it could be twenty-five, it had to be at least twenty-five.
Twenty-five people.
Okay. Richard?
Counselor, does it have to be, um, money and/or petition, or can it be just petition and no money? In other words, do we have to have a fee?
No.
You do not have to have a fee.
Okay.
You could have just a petition, as long as it, it meets these requirements.
Here's what I'd like to say then, to the council. I, uh, I really appreciate where the mayor's coming from. I think all of us were frustrated with the way this whole thing turned out, um, with this race. Um, but this is the United States, and, you know, our country started a certain way, um, with individual freedoms, and I think way too many things are going on nationally, and not so much here, that are encroaching on individual freedoms. And to me, all of us should have a right to run for an office, whether it's city council or president. And, uh, I think any kind of, as Brandon attested to, I think any kind of restriction to access to whether it's voting or running for office is anathema to some people within our community. And so, while I support the mayor's intent, and would probably go along with some, uh, recommendation, once we hear something back from the staff, I'd be more inclined to a petition-only restriction, rather than any kind of financial restriction.
Well, hold your thought on that, because.
Well, I got one more thing.
Go ahead.
And the reason for that is that if that number really is twenty-five, I would much rather someone, um, again, how do you define a serious candidate? But someone who, who wants to be a candidate, whether we consider them to be serious or not. If they have to get twenty-five people to sign a petition, that's what they have to do to win the election anyway, which is to convince people why they should vote for them. So, that's why I think a petition would be a good idea, rather than.
That, that's a good point. Um, the other thing is, is the establishment of the residents, Richard, because.
Mm-hmm.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I agree with that.
And I agree, this, this is America.
Yeah, I agree.
But every elected position has, you know, parameters by which, you know, authorizes a person, I mean, that our.
I was a given from that.
I know, but our constitution lays it out very clearly. And, and I'm just saying, we need to go back and look at, you know, and obviously, it's going to the Justice Department, so we have to be sound constitutional, okay? But, but what we've gotta do is, is, is look at, ensure up some of the, the bases that, that we're talking about. What, what about the, um, what, what about the, um, residency requirements and whatnot?
The, uh, state law says that, as with filing fee, your residency requirements will have to be set by your charter. So, again, charter election, Justice Department approval will be required. Right now, we have a six-month residency requirement for council members or mayor. You could, uh, the voters could approve an increase up to a maximum of twelve months. So, state law says you can have twelve months or anything below it for residency requirement, but you, you cannot go beyond that twelve months.
But, but also, in addition to that, what is the definition of a residence? Because there has been a time when a phone booth by state statute, okay, was a residence. And, and that's, that's not right, okay? So, I think we need to, I mean, does, I mean, is it clear what, what a residence a- actually is? I mean, has that been, has that been, has that been changed, and, and what, what is that now?
The, the state law doesn't define, uh, exactly what a residency is, but the reason for that is because the courts have pretty much said, that's our prerogative to define what a residency is. You can, you can tell people how long it has to be, and you can tell people they have to have one, but we're going to find that because the, the courts have been concerned in the past about, you know, effectively a residency requirement becoming a property-owning requirement, or, you know, a requirement to keep some people out of the process who really live there, but they just don't live in a conventional housing. And so, for that reason, the courts won't really let you define, you know, we're at the cities to find what a residency is, other than the length.
Well, let me ask you a question. If, if you can't define a residency, how do you turn, determine the length of time a person's lived in a city long, I mean, if it's lived in a city? I mean, how, how do you ver, how do you verify that?
From the city's point of view, we have to go by what the person puts on their application for ballot. Now, if someone felt that that was incorrect, the person had lied, then it would be up to either an opposing, uh, candidate, um, or if the person actually got into office and, and someone felt they didn't meet the requirements, then it would be up to either the DA or the Attorney General. But one of those entities to bring a lawsuit and say to the court, hey, this person is saying, you know, Robert Ray says he lives in the city, but he doesn't, and then it is a fact dispute for the courts and for a jury to decide, hey, does Robert Ray really live in the city, or does he really live somewhere else, and, and this is all big shit, Ray?
Taxpayer picks it up again. Okay?
What if you defined a residency as a address, uh, definable and deliverable by the U.S. Postal Service?
The problem with that is, under the, you know, the way the courts look at it, you could have someone that lives in the city of Longview, but for whatever reason, they maintain their post office box in Paulsville.
Yeah, but they, on their form, don't they have to put, when they fill out a form to run for office, uh, do they have to put a local address on that form?
Yeah, there's a place on the form for an address.
Okay, they have to have a, the local. So, if that address they put on the form is recognized by the U.S. Postal as a deliverable mail address, would that satisfy residence? Excuse me, would that satisfy the residency?
Well, the, they'll have to put the residency, their residential address, um, on the form. If that address is within the district or within the area from which they're being elected, then the city secretary has to accept that at face value. Now, if you come in and you file a form and you put an address as your residence address on the form, and it's wrong, it's, it's not inside your district that you're applying for.
I understand that.
Then the secretary can reject that, otherwise, she just doesn't have the authority.
Just making up an address, you just walk down the street and get a vacant lot and put that down as your address, and the post office cannot deliver mail to that address. Does that work as a residency?
Unless, would Robert, let me interject. Would Robert said, yes. Unless it's, it's someone brings to the attention of the city secretary or the DA's that, hey, by the way, this is not a resident, this is a, a vacant lot or something, but you gotta go through this process Robert just described for us to.
How do we know a vacant lot won't work? You could put a bed out on a vacant lot and throw a bed out there.
I, I think that's what I was saying, and it probably does.
I think what the courts are trying to tell us is a vacant lot could work. I mean, if somebody put up a tent on a vacant lot and really moved in, you know, it could be, it could be a person who doesn't have another home, a truly homeless person, they could run for office because they live at that.
Okay, so, well, let's, let's.
Yeah, we can wish it.
Let's move, move from that. But, I mean, it's not a standard practice that when someone comes in to file that, with the city secretary's office, that, that they review this and, and go and check the address. I wouldn't think, I shall, I mean, you might check to make sure they're within the district they're running for.
Yes, sir.
But you're not going to confirm that, okay, there's a house here, there's a hotel here, there's something else there. That's, okay. Okay, and I, and I understand. All right, just a second. You got something?
I understand all these little details and finite things the government puts out, but six months to me is too short, and we go and we put twelve months in there anyway. That's the way we all do it.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, let me, let me go back over what, what we're hearing. Um, in lieu of maybe a fee, which again, e- even if the, the two-hundred, one-hundred is too much, um, I, I, I continue to think the option, you know, e- either way, there's, there's an option. If the amounts, you know, what council doesn't, doesn't feel, uh, you know, is the right amount, then we can talk about that. But what, what we're hearing is, there's, there's pretty much agreement that something, whether it's a dollar figure slash petition or a petition, that, that is something we wanna, wanna press, uh, press forward with for council, city attorney's office to look at. The second thing is a residency that, rather than six months, Mr. Frost has said, make it twelve months. We, I mean, there's no protest as far as what a residency is, or, you know, et cetera. So, there's, that, that all has to work through the court system. So, does council have, does anybody else in the council have any?